Look at there, look what the dogs drug in.
All right, everybody ready? To my left and to my right. All right, I want to call to order the six o'clock meeting for the county commissioners for Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Hough to do the invocation for our board as we seek wisdom and guidance to do the people's business. Commissioner Hough.
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for grace, grace and courage in all decisions and processes that we make, Lord, on your behalf. Lord, help us consider you and all decisions we make and do what's best for the majority of our people. Please continue to bless this county, state and country, Lord. Help us to be mindful of all the ways you would handle decisions and processes, be courteous to one another and bring this country back to the values and morals that we have long ago. Please continue to bless all the people in our country and state specifically for the inclement weather damages and all. Bless our emergency services personnel for all that they do. Bless our teachers and students and administration, help them to keep the kids safe while they are in their control every day, Lord, and keep them safe to and from home. And thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Manager Moll, would you please go over any adjustments to our agenda this evening, please?
Yes, ma'am, we do have one addition, and that is under closed session, which is attorney-client pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven eight three.
Thank you very much. Everybody got that adjusted on their agendas? All right, motion to approve the adjusted agenda, please?
Make a move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're unanimous on our adjusted agenda. Wow, look where we are on our agenda this evening. Hmm, who's retiring? Hmm, hmm, I love these, but yet they make me sad in a way, too. Rather melancholy, but an exciting day for Deb Cheek. So at this time, Deb Cheek, would you please come to the podium? Do you want to tag in anyone to walk up there with you? You want a solo. You got this. You know, you've been at the, did you ever count how many times you stood there?
No, I cannot even begin to imagine.
So, but it's been, you know, like a shining star. The light just glows on you when you stand there to present information. Well, tonight, we're going to talk about you.
Okay.
And then we'll hand it over to you to say a few things. But let's talk a little bit about your background, a little bit of your story. And it's, it's hard to condense everything you've done onto one sheet of paper, but I'm going to do my best by reading the facts here. And then let's put the little more human and story into your journey. But Deb came to work for Iredell County on May second, two thousand and five as the Assistant Finance Director after having served almost five years with the City of Statesville as Assistant Finance Director. She was promoted to Finance Director in June, two thousand and seventeen, and has served in, on multiple community boards, including Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, United Way Emergency Food and Shelter Board, and Partners Behavioral Health. She is a faithful member of Beulah Baptist Church where she sings in the choir. See these talents? Why haven't you sung when you've come up here to present things for budget?
Not too late.
I know, I know.
How about tonight?
No.
No? Okay. Graduated from Statesville Senior High and Wingate University, and she was licensed as a Certified Public Accountant in November of nineteen ninety-eight. Deb has maintained the highest standards of financial integrity while managing the county's finances. She and her team have consistently received the Government Finance Officers Association's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, as well as a highest possible audit opinion from the county's independent auditors. Deb is married to longtime public servant Jeff Cheek. Hello, Jeff. Her parents are David and Laura Lockman, and her sister Linda retired from Iredell County Assessors Office earlier this year. Her sister Leanne, at one time, worked for Iredell County GIS mapping. Deb has five sons, David, Caleb, Chris Alford, along with Cameron and Corey Cheek. Are all of y'all here? Most, most of y'all, okay. Deb and Jeff have nine grandchildren. Wow, Deb, you've just been condensed to one piece of paper, right? All right, so I'm going to start with, and then I'll invite the board to make some comments, too. But you can either answer this now or you can think on it for a minute. But before you step down, share a memory that really sticks out with, to you. I know there's got to be tons, but if you could share a story or two of something that has happened to you along your journey through the county, what would that be? What pops into your head? And I've just done this to write, you know, the drop of a hat.
Um, I do have something prepared, so let me read that.
That would be lovely.
How about that?
That would be great, if there's a story in it, because I love the stories, too. But yeah, that would be wonderful. Please, Deb.
I've been reflecting on my career these past few weeks. I was born and raised in Statesville, but spent some time away after college. I returned in nineteen ninety-five to the accounting firm across the street, Moose Martin Hanes &amp; Lundie. When the Assistant Finance Director position became available at the City of Statesville, I applied. Because of my dad's great reputation and work ethic for the city, I was hired. Lisa Salmon took me under her wing and educated me on governmental accounting, and I'm very grateful for her leadership. The county was looking for an Assistant Finance Director in two thousand and five. It was a new position for them, and I was hired by Mr. Mashburn and Susan Robertson, and it was a great decision for me. I had three employers over my career, but I never left this city block. That is thirty years of driving to the same location, so that will be an adjustment. I've loved my time in the finance department and the people I have worked with. They are not only coworkers and friends, but family. They are some of my strongest prayer warriors. I think the biggest change for me has been the pronouncements by GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standard Board, to change the way that financial statements were presented. When I started at the city, GASB thirty-four was what everyone was talking about. There was much trepidation on this new pronouncement and what it would mean for governmental entities, but for me, it was finally, I understand this. It was bringing governmental statements to mirror the private financial sector. And to give you a frame of reference, we are currently on GASB one hundred and three. What I'm looking forward to in retirement is spending time with my family and especially my grandchildren, volunteering more at my church, not having to drive in the snow and ice, not punching a time clock, and staying awake past nine P.M. in the evening. My greatest joy is my family, and I would like to introduce them to you. I realized when my sister retired in April that almost all of our family are public servants, and I think that's a very extraordinary gift and legacy that my parents have given us. I'll call, talk about you, and you raise your hand and wave, or I'll make you stand up. So my dad retired from City of Statesville Warehouse. My mom retired as an Iredell Statesville teacher. Jeff retired from the Statesville Police Department and currently works part-time for the sheriff. Leanne, my sister, works for the City of Statesville Police Department. Dennis Harris, my brother-in-law, retired from City of Statesville Public Works. My son David currently works for Iredell County EMS. My sister Linda retired from the Iredell County Tax Office. My son Chris is a preacher in Jonesville. My son Cameron is Deputy Chief at Trinity Fire Department. And my daughter-in-law Lindsay works for the Clerk of Court. I'm very proud of them and appreciative to them because they have supported me through my career.
That's awesome. And let's applaud for all of y'all, too. I'm glad you prepared. That was great. No story?
I can't, I can't think of a story.
That is a story.
That is a story.
Our story. And I invite the board to share comments as well. Let's start with Commissioner Brown. Let's start with you.
You know, when I first met Deb and was working with her, and, you know, and I thought she's a great lady, and I still think she's a great lady, and, and I will never forget one night, we had a meeting here, and Deb came before us wanting some kind of contract for something. And I said, the only way that I can go with this is if you'll stay five more years. And Beth cut her eyes at me, like, and I thought, what did I just say? And then later Beth told me that you had said you were going to retire. So, and you know, I thought, well.
It wasn't public yet, and I was like, oh. Anything.
But, but you know, everybody, most people, they want to retire sometimes, spend time with their grandkids. But, but you know, it was later, later on in years with me being a commissioner that I was sitting on another board, and I met this gentleman, pain in the rear. And I found out he was your husband. And I thought, why would a woman like you, as smart as you are, why would you want to retire and be home with him more? I only have to be with, I serve with him one time a month, and gosh, that's enough.
That's more than enough.
It is, and you're going to stay, are you crazy?
Well, no, he may have to find somewhere else.
Alls I say is thank you. Thank you very much. You're a great lady.
Thank you.
Deb, thank you. I'm probably the.
Oldest commissioner.
Maybe, maybe, maybe Beth, that's probably, and may or may be Bert. I've actually heard you sing when we did carols at the employee Christmas luncheon.
Yes, that's correct.
And you'd play the piano, and some of us would sing.
Yes.
So she sings beautifully. She does sing beautifully, so. But, you know, Deb, it's, it's me sitting here as having been there as well. You know, you're one of those folks that's kind of seen my antics over the years, and I've appreciated your friendship. I've appreciated the times that, as a director, you know, to be able to come to you with, and, and get help and assistance from the, the finance office. You know, always the story out of finance will be, they cough coffee cups. You know, sleeve and coffee cup.
Yeah, that's right.
So, two dollars and thirty-three cents sleeve coffee cup. But to your point, Commissioner Brown, notice one of the things that Deb did not say was she was looking forward to spending time with Jeff. She said with, with her grandkids. And the other, I really appreciated that you identified your father, because I thought the gentleman in the blue was your elderly father. So I'm really glad you, I'm really glad you pointed that out.
Welcome to Jeff Cheek roasting.
Yes.
Yeah, this is not, she paid us extra for this. Deb, nothing but the best. You, and, 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 and somebody may take this the wrong way, that you're top shelf.
Thank you. Gentlemen, Commissioner Hough, or?
I'll just, I'll just say Deb and I had a kind of a joke that every budget retreat is, she had a secret key to a secret drawer, because in public service, you get accused of hoarding or hiding taxpayer dollars somewhere, but, so we had a running joke that she had a secret drawer she didn't tell us about. So I'm going to ask her to leave that key with her successor, if there is one. For the record, there was never a problem with any of the audits, with you or Susan or anyone. You know, we're, every year, we have had awesome audits, and the changes, you have worked through that, COVID, the stresses and the headaches and all the things that you and the staff had, had done, you did a great job. So I just want to say I wish you, thank you for your commitment and service, and wish you health and happiness to serve quality time with all your family. I'll put a plug in for Jeff since they're picking on him. He deserves, he deserves quality time, too. She might have called Darren, though, wanting you to go full-time now, since she's going to be home.
We're going to need money.
But yeah, but thank you, thank you for everything. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We've worked together kind of almost twenty years now.
Yep.
So every time I called, you always had an answer, found an answer, everything. It's hard to do budgets, it's hard to do finance stuff in the county government, especially when people are throwing darts at you continuously. So, and I appreciate it, appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you.
You've been a huge part of the team, and every position is so valuable. We want to thank you for your years, and now I'm going to ask if you would come up.
Sure.
Gentlemen, y'all know the drill.
Yes, Sergeant.
Your twenty years and four months of dedicated service to Iredell County, twenty twenty-four. Deb, thank you. I'll present this to you. Would you like the bobs for it to protect it in? There you go, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for being here. It really matters when you got the whole family's support, too. And one day, all of y'all get to retire. Some of you, it's going to be a while to, for some of you.
And for once, Deb, Deb doesn't have to stay for the whole meeting.
She had to stay. What was that?
Hey, Jeff. Hey, Jeff, come back when you can't stay as long.
Isn't it warm in here? Warm. All right. All right, we'll go ahead and continue on down our agenda. The next one, underneath Presentations, is a proclamation this evening. And with that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Stroud to give a little bit of context of this one, and then go ahead and proceed as.
Well, so I think everyone knows that I am retired military and very proud of my service. But I was reached out to earlier this month by a group that wanted to do a veterans program a little early because of where they were and thought they were not going to have availability to, to have a veterans program on Veterans Day because of, what's that word?
The remodeling?
Remodeling, remodeling. Well, so we got everything done, and they moved up the remodeling time, and now the time they were going to have the proclamation, they, they had asked about us doing a proclamation, is now in their remodeling, and Veterans Day may no longer be. It now may be available again, so.
Well, having said, you already had included it with the agenda.
But we had already done it, and the nice thing about doing this early is everyone, this is for not just that group, but this is for all veterans, that they can be recognized. And to my knowledge, for twenty-plus years, this is the first time I think we've officially done a proclamation for, for veterans.
Iredell County created.
Iredell County created proclamation. So I'm going to read this proclamation and.
Can we have our VSO come to the podium?
Like to have our, yes, like to have Mr. Kyle Feenster come on up to the podium.
He is our current Veteran Service Officer.
And, and Army retire, an Army veteran, an M.P. I think we have at least one other, I know we have one other veteran in the room, Mr. Donnie Bradley.
An additional? Do we have others, veterans?
Any other veterans? Oh, deputy, thank you. Thank, thank each of you for your service. And the, with this, I think the intent is we'll do this proclamation, and it'll be pushed out to all of the American Legions, VFWs, and anyone that Iredell County does recognize and appreciate the, the service of, of veterans and their families. So, Iredell County, North Carolina proclamation, whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital to maintaining our freedoms and way of life, and whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces in the United States during the past century, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century, and whereas our country is home to, our county is home to more than fourteen thousand veterans, and whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who in called willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberties of others, and whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us, and whereas our veterans understand the important task before the American servicemen and women now keeping watch, and whereas all North Carolinians must strive to ensure our remains, that ours remains a land worthy of the great love of our veterans who have, our veterans have shown for it. Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, as Veterans Day in Iredell County. We encourage all people in our state to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. Signed this day.
The seventeenth.
Seventeenth of September.
Well done, Commissioner Stroud. And you'll note, gentlemen, that on this, we all have individual signature lines, so before we leave this evening, we will all sign an original and have that for the record, too. So, thank you, Brad. I'm glad they reached out to you on that. And then also want to appreciate Manager Moll and Lisa Valdez, our attorney, who looked over our proclamation to ensure we are accurate with that. And as well, thank you, Kyle, for being a part of our evening, this evening, and taking time to be here.
Is there anything you'd like to add, sir? And I think, I know, one of the things, there's a correction, actually, the fourteen thousand is much higher than that, but.
Yeah, maybe. You know, support in the, you know, in the military and in the veteran community is a big deal. So I'll say, you know, when you're training to go on the battlefield, you know, none of that works with all the, without the giant machine and the military running behind you. At the height of the Vietnam War, there was five hundred and fifty thousand troops on ground across the four branches of service. Only seventy-five thousand of those were infantry. So, you know, you can do the math on the other four hundred thousand that, you know, where that support comes from. And the point I'm trying to make would be, you know, I'm very fortunate to be an employee and a director in a county for veteran services where we have the support of county administration, Susan, Ms. Moll, Mr. Harris, because not all counties have the support that, that I have from the commissioners and from my administration. So things like this hopefully prove that to our veteran community, that we're here to help and that, you know, that support is there for them, because that's what, you know, myself, you know, all the veterans in the room are used to. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to ask for a, unless we have other comments for this? I'd like to ask for a motion to accept our proclamation as read by Commissioner Stroud.
I'd like to make a motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're unanimous on that proclamation. Thank you for being here, and thank you, Commissioner Stroud.
And nice hair.
Do you want me to just extract? No, I was going to ask if one of the.
I have an original copy that everybody can sign without hold.
That was thinking, I was wanting to make sure we had that, without homework there.
Got you covered.
All right, so as we continue on down our agenda, we do not have an appointment before the board, but we are up to the public hearing. Manager Moll, would you please go over that information?
Absolutely. This is a public hearing that we set at our previous meeting, and is a public hearing to consider adopting the two thousand and twenty-six Public Transportation Program funding request. Mr. Johnson is here to give you more information, and then we can open up for a public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we come before you with our public hearing for the North Carolina Department of Transportation Grants. We have eight grants that we're applying for this year that's totaling four point one seven million dollars, and that has a local input share of one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eighty dollars. And that will come from money that's generated from ICAT Service, also from the rope funds. This year, we did get a small increase in rope allotments because of our urban rural split change. So now we lost the City of Statesville from being an urbanized area. So we lost money on our fifty-three oh seven grant, but we, we got a little bit more money on our rope, not nearly as much, but just a little bit. And with that little bit, there's a few less restrictions on how it can be used. Our administrative grant, that amount did not go up. It has been the same for about three years now. Operational grant, the fifty-three oh seven did go down because of the urbanized area. Our capital vehicles, we have a one point four million dollars for capital vehicles. That's replacement of eight vehicles. They've already met their useful life. By the time the new vehicles will come in, those vehicles will be well over three hundred thousand miles. Anything over a hundred and fifty thousand miles, the operating expense per, for that vehicle just goes up dramatically. We have a fifty-three oh three planning grant that pays for the salary for our transit planner. We just filled that position on last Monday, which has been a two and a half years vacant, so it's been a great thing to have that filled. And then we have a fifty-three ten operating, which is for elderly and disabled individuals. Last year, we did a hundred and thirty, or a hundred and forty thousand trips, and right now, we're on pace to do a hundred and fifty-five this year that we're in right now. Over a hundred thousand of those trips that we provided are from these grants right here. There is no outside agency funding for those. You know, we do about twenty thousand DSS trips a year, which those are funded by Medicaid, and about another twenty thousand from other contract agencies, nursing homes, assisted living, council on aging, things like that. So the hundred thousand trips that we do funded on our, by ourself, is from these grants here that we, you know, we go after. When you look across the state, you don't see any other systems that are applying for eight or nine different grants as a system, but, you know, we have the ability to be able to do that, and, you know, the demand is there. So we've added two additional vehicles to our fleet this year, so now we are at thirty-two vehicles. And are still, we still have this twenty-nine vehicle threshold that we cannot have more than twenty-nine vehicles on the road at any one time. And so the, the additional vehicles are helping us with our, some of our mechanical problems of our older fleet. And, you know, so we're still not able to have more than twenty-six, twenty-seven vehicles eligible for being on the road, but we could be up to twenty-nine. So as we go forward, we're going to continue looking for additional capital funds for expansion vehicles. The state does not, will not fund expansion vehicles for us, but the federal government will, so that's what we're, you know, still looking for funds and stuff for that.
I appreciate you continuously looking at all the different avenues. Like you said, it's, there's a lot of different, and you've got to realize which grant will fund which item, and keeping those separate, so it's a lot of pots of money. So, does anyone have any questions for Bradley before I open up the?
What caused, you may have told us in the past, and I apologize if I don't remember. What caused that change with the city, and how will that specifically impact your routes?
So the, it was whenever they did the census in two thousand and twenty, they determined the, how you could, what they, a little, an area that was not part of the urbanized area, so it used to be a five mile, it could jump, so it could go, so Troutman was urban, so then it could jump to Statesville, and they call all of Statesville urban. Well, so now they've changed that to it's, it's only a one mile. And so because of that change, Troutman, none of those development, now, all of those, there probably wouldn't be that gap anymore. But, you know, when they did the census in two thousand and twenty, when they did that information, there, all those developments weren't approved in the South Statesville Troutman area, which then kicked Statesville out of that urbanized area.
Does that change your route service to Statesville?
Uh, it, well, it changes how we can fund any routes in Statesville. So we can't fund, we can't use any of our urbanized money to fund a route in Statesville. And that's, that's always been the case for things like North Iredell, West Iredell, some of those areas, but this actually encompasses, encompasses the whole City of Statesville. And so, so that it does make a significant difference. But we also. a significant difference. But we also, you know, 30 only there's only 33% of the trips that we provide that aren't life sustaining trips. And we consider life sustaining trips, you know, dialysis, medical trips, or to go to get your prescriptions. And so, I mean, you know, we're you're, you know, 66% of your trips are are basically are life sustaining. And so we just have to figure out a way to be able to fund those trips. We don't there's not an option to it. The other 33% that aren't life sustaining are either educational, school, or there is a very small percentage of those trips that are other. But they I think those other trips are most time considered quality of life trips. And those are trips that some outside agencies won't pay for. So say if you had your loved one was now in a nursing home and you wanted to go spend time with them. Well, that's not a trip that some of the agencies will pay for. But we feel that that's a very important trip that still needs to be funded. And so we we provide that trip. And so, you know, that's why we get some of these these trips when you look at the cost of them are pretty pricey because you're taking that one person to go to that nursing home to see their family member. But I mean, it might be the last time they get to.
Does does municipalities in other counties or in our county, do they contribute to your budget at all?
Um, we we put in a request to all the municipalities in Iredell County, but we got $70,000 from the city of Statesville, and that's to run the the Bloom, which runs five days a week. You know, you can't run a bus five days a week for 10 hours a day for $70,000. Mooresville also, they do $70,000 as well. And the bus in Mooresville runs five days a week, runs a 12 hour day. With them, the the bus in Statesville only used to run two days a week. And it was like, well, let's, you know, they said, well, show us the demand is there and we will show you the funding. So we went out on our own. We funded the additional three days and extended the runtime because it used to run from 10 to 3. And so we were able to, you know, to extend those hours out. We've shown the demand is there, but they still have not came back with the money. So.
What's it cost us annually for that, both those routes?
Um, I have it.
Probably double the 70.
Oh, oh, yeah.
At least.
Every bit of it, yeah. So I mean, because so in the Mooresville route, you have you're deadheading down because you're running a 12 hour day. So you're deadheading down in the morning. So you can't bill any of those miles to anything. So that's 16 miles. You're running that route until 2 o'clock. That driver comes back and there's another driver going down. So, you know, you're getting another 32 miles deadhead there and then 16 miles at the end of the day. So, you know, it's it's not ideal. I mean, there is a lot of deadhead miles there. We did try at one time parking vehicles in Mooresville as like a South Dispatch location. It just, we we just need something where there's actually security, you know, fencing, lighting, water, bathroom, like basic amenities for a driver. And and we just don't have access to that, anything like that now. So that's why everyone starts in Statesville.
You don't have you don't think you could use potentially reach out to some of our volunteer departments that are in those areas or close by that could help out with that? Maybe you have, I don't know.
Um, so only the so our volunteer fire departments, we have reached out to them for like our snow days, our winter weather preparedness, so that because it's very hard for me to ask a driver to drive their personal vehicle, you know, to come in to then get in the our vehicle to go out and drive. You know, our a lot of our drivers aren't in a position like if they wrecked their car and totaled their car, like they they are not going to have another way to come to work, you know, in the near future. So but we've been able to, you know, stage vehicles out in the community. And it also lessens the amount of time that that driver has to be on the road in winter weather in our vehicle because our vehicles will also be very hard to replace. And so we do have strategic and so we do have to double up all of our drivers on those days because it's very hard to roll a wheelchair in the snow. And so on those days, whenever there is a storm coming in, we do have a winter weather plan where we do stage them at those. But there's just not any fencing or anything like that. And catalytic converters and theft of things just is very expensive.
Can you get those numbers to best what those routes cost us annually? And would it be beneficial if the board had a desire to make a request to municipalities to pick up that difference? I mean, the reduction in funding wasn't something we cut. It was a different type of, you know, based on the census. But I think that needs to be I know you've notified them of that. But do you think that would benefit us to make a request for them to cover that gap in their specific areas? Because I know they've been asking us to provide that service. And it is an important service. But have you had any conversations with any?
There is a meeting with the city of Statesville that's coming up. Is there a meeting?
Not that I know of. I mean, we we had a meeting. Some of their council people wanted to, you know, have a meeting about services that we, you know, render and stuff. But I'm I'm not sure of another meeting. I know tomorrow night I have a meeting at CRTPO. But so Statesville is no longer a member of the CRTPO, but they are still attending the meetings because they, you know, on the next census data, they will be back in that planning, you know, population. And so since things are, you know, we're planning for a 20 2055 transit plan right now, that will, you know, and, you know, come back into Statesville at that point. So but yeah, I mean, I can I can get that information. I mean, we have it broke down, you know, per day, per vehicle.
Because right now, based on this, you're you have or you asking for the 4 million dollar 4.147866 grants? And our local match, if you got that, or now would be 1.224428. So we're contributing over a million dollars from our from us, correct, to make him to help with his cost?
That's the match.
That's the match.
That ICATs that ICATs provides.
I got you.
Towards those grant dollars.
Got you.
If Bradley, if you had a place in Mooresville for one of the buses, do you have any drivers that live that down there that could?
Yeah.
Could report there?
We did. And that's what so at that time, we had five buses that were parked down there. So we were using the old facility services building there. So there wasn't any power or any water there. So we we actually had a light turned on there from the energy company. But then they wouldn't, we couldn't get any water. So drivers were having to take like gallons of water from home with them to put in there to be able to mop their bus at the end of the day. And it just wasn't a, you know, ideal situation. We didn't we weren't the only ones that had control to that lot. So then once that lot would be left open, then it was always our fault. Like, and, you know, we were, it was just difficult.
Would there be any, you know, going way back, I know there's additional parking there at our EMS base right there on McCle- not McClellan, but it used to be the old health department.
Down in Mooresville.
At Mooresville. Would there not be some parking there? And I mean, they.
I I think what he's looking for is a secured lot where nobody else has access to it to make sure that there's no but I mean, there is some space that's there. I don't know if you had looked at that in the past.
We had we'd met with David Salibi back when they were doing that. They were paving that area when they took that old EMS base down.
Now, this now, this I'm not talking behind the Government Center South. I'm talking about where the EMS base is now.
Yeah, I'm I'm not familiar with that where that is. But I mean.
Um, because I mean, even there, I'm just kind of thinking, if we needed to, it wouldn't be that much to 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 put in a chain link fence or something there. That's a place that we've got folks 24/7, you know. So there's already some level of security and and we'd have access to 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 put a camera system. And I've never seen I I haven't gone in several years now, but I never saw that parking lot full. And maybe we could do it on that one, the upper side closer to the towards the government centers. And then because then if we could have folks report directly there and not have the miles, additional dead miles, deadhead miles.
We can certainly look at it. Absolutely.
Yeah. And then that would I mean, that helps as well. I mean, with lessening the burden there at our.
Just trying to help anywhere we can. And I like Commissioner Houtz as far as let's see what we can get from the cities, too. But but, you know, if you've got drivers that are down there and that saves them.
Driving up to Statesville.
Drive up, drive from Mooresville up to to drive back. If we could do that. How many how many buses would you would you want or would you like to park? Have a have avail- have availability to park there?
Five. Five worked out very well whenever we were doing that, you know, because then we were able to park the Mooresville main down there. And then, you know, we also have dialysis, you know, drivers that like right now, like they're not getting they're not getting home until after 9 o'clock at night because they live in Mooresville. And then by the time they drop off their last people, come back to Statesville, fuel up, then head back down. You know, I mean, it would be a benefit to us, but it's just, you know.
Need to logistic.
Legistic, yeah. Okay. Well, that might be something to definitely look into. So keep that keep thinking on the spots on that one. All right. Do we have anything further for Bradley on the request for funding?
Public here.
Yep, I'm getting ready to open that up. Are you going to open up a public hearing in regards to the public hearing to consider adopting the 2026 Public Transportation Program Funding Request? Joseph Quarter signed up underneath this. Or is that the topic you want to speak on? Is Joseph here? Okay, then is anyone else here to speak on the ICAT's funding? Seeing here none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion on this, please.
I'll make a motion.
To accept the funding as requested, as presented. All right. Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are unanimous on that one. Thank you, Bradley, for your continued information and diligence on dedication for looking for funding.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Moll, that takes us to the administrative matters. If you'll summarize those two. And as you all know, well know that we discuss those at length during our 4 o'clock hour. On a consent, if you'll go through those, please.
Absolutely. Thank you. The first item was a request from Iredell Statesville Schools to approve Budget Amendment Number 10 for the utilization of lottery funds for the Harmony fourth and fifth grade wing enclosure. They received a bid in the total amount of 2,796,000 and they're requesting 2 million to be used of lottery funds and they'll cover the rest with capital fund carryover. A request from ICATs to approve Budget Amendment Number Eight to recognize additional expenses and revenues for replacement vehicles approved in the fiscal year 24 and 25 budget cycles. And this is in the amount of $550,000. A request from the Health Department for approval to sign a janitorial contract with Rainbow Janitorial Service to begin November 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026, at an expense of $9,500 per month. There was one clarification that was noted. It said two renewals and that is actually to remove that, but to be renewed for a 12 month period. A request from Emergency Management to approve Budget Amendment Number Nine to accept the North Carolina Emergency Management Local Emergency Shelter Capacity Grant in the amount of $44,830 and to authorize the county manager to sign the memorandum of agreement. And this is to install a generator transfer switch at Northview Church for a shelter. A request from Iredell County Farmland Preservation Advisory Board to continue discussions regarding the rollback tax allocations to assist in preserving farmland. This was actually an item that was tabled from our first meeting in September. There was after discussion with the board, the board agreed to begin setting aside the rollover tax dollars. And then the board will meet at the budget workshop and discuss the terms of the program and how those funds will be allocated. A request from the Purchasing Division to consider an offer for the adoption offer for and adoption of resolution to sell the Bluefield Road property by upset bid. This the offer was for $625,000 and the board agreed by consensus to decline the offer because it's below the advertised minimum. A request from Administration to proclaim the month of September of 2024 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the August 2024 releases and refunds. Request from Administration for approval of the minutes from the August 20th, 2024 special called meeting. And then finally, a request from Human Resources for authority to sign a user agreement with COMPATICA through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to participate in a pilot program for incident reporting. This is at no cost to the county. And it is to participate in a in an application to help us report incidents in a timely and be able to track incidents in a timely manner.
All right. Thank you for the summarization. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So motion to approve.
All right. I think we got two of them so far in favor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Unanimous on that. We do not have any wait a minute. Let's let's talk about the announcements and vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Manager Moll, we discussed a little bit about 4 o'clock that you you and staff are working on putting together a compiled list of boards and commissions.
We are going through and entering all of this into our software so we can track this. And once we get that, we will come back to the board with a complete listing of all of our vacancies on boards and commissions. However, one vacancy that we do have that we that we really do need to fill is there is a vacancy on the Statesville Planning Board for the ETJ representation. So it has to be an individual that lives in that ETJ of the city of Statesville to volunteer to serve on their planning board. So that is one vacancy that we do have. And as we go through and get more information, I'll bring another list to the board and we'll announce those as well.
That'll work.
This one has already been announced. It just has not been filled yet. We haven't received an applicant. So anybody that's interested, please contact us. You can get the application on our website and we'll bring that to the board for consideration.
That's a vacancy on Statesville Planning Board ETJ with our representation for the county.
Yes, correct.
And they must live within the ETJ area for the city of Statesville.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And that's on Iredell County website. Opportunity for there, too.
Okay.
Thank you for that one. And that's look forward to seeing where we are because those the boards and commissions play a vital role throughout the county as we shape our vision, too, and the input from those. That does take us to the appointments for boards and commissions. We have several this evening, starting with the Statesville Board of Adjustment ETJ. We have Joshua Godwin. I believe the pronunciation is. Manager Moll, would you talk a little bit about that that position and that appointment for you, please?
Yes. This is this is similar to what I was talking about before. This is an ETJ representative to serve on the Statesville Board of Adjustment. So Mr. Godwin has submitted an application. He's interested in serving. I'm thrilled that we got an application of an individual that's interested in serving. And I'm presenting this to the board for consideration to appoint him as the ETJ representative on the Statesville Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, his qualifications are outstanding for that, and I appreciate his willingness. Let's do these. Yeah, go see. I'm sorry.
I said he applied for both.
He did, yes. So either one was a hip, whichever one was available happened to be both. So with the with that, do we have a some like to make a motion for that appointment?
I'll make a motion. We we accept Joshua Godwin for the Statesville Board of Adjustments.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous on that appointment. And if you'll follow up with him and make all those connections.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
We have two other appointments for the JCPC. This is it's not a requirement that the board appoint, but they do request that the commissioners approve these appointments. And both of these are based on position. So they do in their bylaws, they have to have representatives, one representing Parks and Recreation and Chief Court Counselor. So these are two individuals to appoint to the JCPC Board, and that's Jacob Wintick with Parks and Recreation and Ethan Carter, which is the Chief Court Counselor.
Okay. Would they prefer that in a form of a motion to support that?
We typically do that. We just approve the appointments by motion.
Okay. Then I would entertain that motion as well. Combine the Parks and Rec and that Chief Court Counselor for the JCPC. Motion for that.
So move.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Houtz, for that. All in favor of Jacob Wintick and Ethan Carter for their positions, which they have volunteered to serve? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are unanimous on that one. Again, we appreciate people's willingness to serve. Do we have moving on down the agenda, too. So any unfinished business? No unfinished. Well, that's going to take us right to the public comment period because we are the second meeting of the month. And the board conducts a public comment period. It's second regular meeting of the month. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to county government. Each speaker that has signed up is allotted three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair. In the order, names appear on the sign in sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole. Responses by the board are at their discretion, but public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period, but rather a time for the board to hear from the public and take such matters raised under advisement. Citizens will be expected to be civil in language and presentation and not engage in slander or name calling. Citizens should not discuss any of the matters which are closed session matters, including but not limited to matters regarding personnel, matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with a clerk to the board. And with that, I will open the public hearing this evening, September the 17th, 2024. And with that, I will open the public hearing this evening, September the 17th, 2024. And we have Joseph Porter signed up again, but I'm assuming he's still not in the building. And with that assumption, we'll just move right on down to Tina Rodriguez. If you'll please state your name and address for the record, and you will have the three minutes.
Okay, Tina Rodriguez, 104 Watts Court. I'm here, just went to the city council meeting last night, and I don't know how many of you watched it, and know that they did approve the neighbors' road with 1,600 homes. I was a little frustrated because they made the announcement, there in the city council said, "If you don't like what's going on, you should talk to your commissioners." And several of us said, "Hey, we have." "Oh, what did they say?" "Well, they can't stop the annexing if you approve it." So it's very frustrating because we come to y'all, you can't do anything the city says come to y'all. It's just going back and forth. You know, I know we can't control what they annex. I know that y'all tried, and I don't know if I got out what I wanted to last time because I was being stared down by the developers that are trying to build next to my home. And I know the farmers aren't happy and don't want you to tell what to do with their land. And I think that's not what we're trying to do. I think we already have rules and guidelines that you have to follow in the county. We just need them to be a little more bigger and stricter so that we don't get bombarded with 1,600 homes. Every developer that wants to come in here now are wanting to put 12,000 to 14,000 to 1,600 homes, and we're going to be in trouble. You all know that. We've talked, but I just want for the record, you know, to say that, you know, I am for what y'all were trying to do because I just didn't feel like I conveyed that the last time. Maybe not five acres, because, well, I don't want to mow five acres, but I also don't want to have, I've been to these houses, it's a pad, it's a block. That's all they have in the backyard. And I can tell you that I'm talking to kids that are looking for homes, and that's not the kind of homes they want. They're not buying it. It's people coming from out of town. It's not our kids. It's scary. Little scarier thing is that this is in the wayside part. We don't have a fire in county. And so poo announced, our chief announced that, you know, they would get the, what is it, the aid from the county. Well, you don't have a fire there. So how are they going to cover fire if there's no aid there either? I don't know, you know, where we're at with that. I kind of had questions about that, like who's overseeing that? Where is the fire going to be? You know, they've said that they've worked out the fire for our Holland Farms. They don't have that worked out because the time's not there. I've driven it. I've talked to the captains, you know. They can't go on record to say it. People could, our volunteer fire department, they won't talk to any of y'all and tell y'all the truth. They're covering the city. They get there before the city does. You know, the fire, you know, people are worried about their jobs. Also, I've been told that on the city planning board, that you guys can appoint someone from the county to be on that board. I would like to know why y'all haven't put someone on that board, because I think it's imperative, especially now, because we don't have a voice unless we're talking to the city council members right now, one-on-one. And I do that, I can tell you.
We just appointed one.
Yeah.
The ones we just did, so you know.
For the board of adjustment.
I'm sorry, board of adjustment. But our vacancy, there is a vacancy in the ETJ. Can I ask you, in what context did somebody tell you to talk to us about what they're annexing in?
If you go back and listen.
If they told you to talk to the county.
You can probably go back and view.
You can, it's like at 8:10.
I just wondered what context they were telling you to talk to the county about, if it's an annexation.
She just came up and said it. If you're not happy about what's going on, you need to talk to your county commissioners.
Okay.
Well, you all know, I've talked to you, and it's, you know, we're going back and forth.
Sometimes they continue to erroneously tell people, "We have control and authority over things we don't," to pass the buck, and that's the reason I wanted to ask you. If they've made that comment, we'll clarify that in a minute.
Yeah, they did, and it's on there, and I mean, I've made a note. It was around like 8:10, so.
I appreciate it. I didn't want to put you on the spot, I just wanted to ask you what context, because that's, they told you wrong, if it's annexation or ETJ.
Yeah, most of them have called me back, talked to me, individual. This one has not. I just haven't gotten up with her, and I'm going to, because I think it helps when we do.
Right.
But, you know, these neighborhoods and them blaming the commissioners and us, the commissioners saying, you know, it's the city. I know it is, it's, y'all can't stop it. They can't stop people from asking to be annexed.
Right.
But we got to figure out something because.
All the missions are voluntary.
Yeah, and all our schools are overcrowded.
Tina, thank you, though, for coming this evening and sharing.
Thank you, Tina.
Appreciate what y'all are doing.
All right, at this time, do we have commissioner updates?
Do you just close?
Oh, you're right, I do need to, is anyone else? I think isn't there, Brad? Do we have anyone else that wants to speak under the public comment period? All right. What commissioner, he just gave Donnie an opportunity here, thank you. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Donnie Bradley, 248 North Center Street, one of the addresses. I was not, I didn't get here in time enough to put my name on there, but one of the things I wanted to say, I want to thank you all very much. We have a county that really and truly cares about veterans. When I was a commander at American Legion Post, that's one of the things we talked about. I've been a member of veterans, different organizations for the last, what, 20 years that I've been here. Everybody says that we want an Aridale County to be an Aridale free to veterans and welcoming veterans coming in. Over the last probably 10 years, there's been so many programs done in the county, you guys had most of the do that. But we have things such as our clerk of court now, even though you could put your DD214 in there for safekeeping, now they give you an ID with a county logo on it. That's something for a veteran. You just done the proclamation, I appreciate that. The whole reason I wanted to say tonight was thank you so much for being a veteran-friendly county, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you for taking time to say so, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your service.
All right, now, does anyone else care to speak? Please come up and state your name and address for the record, if you would, please.
Thanks for opening the floor up without signing up. Appreciate that.
I'm going to make this quick, kind of an introduction. My name is Robert Chikatis. We're kind of more on the Mooresville side of things, but we attend a lot of meetings there, and we see the need for, Mayor Carney suggested there's more of a role in the county is needed. But I'm going to introduce myself as Jake at the lake, when I'm around Lake Norman, as Jake at the lake. But I think we're, I would like to participate in a smart growth plan, like the farmland preservation. We have to start thinking 10, 20, 30 years out. I've worked for the Japanese, Panasonic, been to Japan, been to China. They have 50-year, 100-year, 200-year, they have 300-year plans that they work on. And I don't want to come, we've had our battles down in Mooresville, but it's time we work together. There's a lot of problems, but we have, there's still time to make things right. And 1,600 homes here, it's too much. There's just, I don't even want to use the term smart growth, because it just, it has too many connotations. We need some type of growth that is quality for the farmers, for everybody. But just rubber stamping 1,600 homes across the county, it's not going to work. So we're going to participate more, our group in Mooresville, but I have your emails, and just wanted to introduce myself in a positive way so we can move forward. There's a lot of opportunity to work together at a county with the municipalities. Troutman, anyways, Jake at the lake, Bob Chikatis at Hotmail, that's what you'll be getting an email from me. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Anyone else? Seeing and hearing no more, we'll close the public comment period for this evening. Now I'll ask about some updates.
I've got several.
Okay.
As I said it before, I wanted to pass on some thank yous from the public that have called, and just to express, they were told by school system and I think the sheriff and deputies at different points, we've continued over the years to make investments in SROs and making our school campuses safer, and they wanted to say thank you. And as Dr. James mentioned when he was here at four, I wanted the public, I wanted to say this out loud because I think it's very important, that I'll reiterate what Dr. James says, that we need our parents to, when they hear about a potential threat at a school, to at a minimum call the school and/or administration and verify that threat before they put it on social media. It ties up our law enforcement and school personnel, you know, and they're responding in real time to an emergency that may get someone hurt if it's not an emergency. And so Dr. James just asked that I relay that publicly, to ask the parents to verify information before they hit social media, because they cause a panic of parents and start calling kids and coming to schools and getting on school campuses in a frantic, and we understand their concern, but at least verify the information before they share it and repost it on social media. And I want to thank all of our emergency services personnel for all they do. They continue to respond in a growing and busy county and our municipalities. And on the development piece, I'll just sing to the choir that, you know, we advocate for balanced growth, and what I mean by that is, you know, we want our industrial and commercial growth to outpace our residential growth. We don't control what the municipality's annex, because that's between the property owner and the municipality, and we don't control the zoning in the ETJs. And there's continued to be misinformation and disinformation distributed, in some cases by elected officials, to come and complain to us about something they're working on. And I'm not slighting our other elected officials, but they need to be truthful and accurate because they cause a lot of frustration from our citizens that come and want to know why we're allowing things we don't have control. And so by law, we're required to build schools, required by law to build schools, so we continue, Bert is our lead person for education now, and we continue to ask our school board and administration to redistrict if necessary, to make sure our schools are being, the capacities are being put where they can, to avoid building unnecessary capital. And I know they're looking at those things, and we appreciate the tough positions they're in. But, you know, correct me where I'm wrong, Bert, is the cost for school to break even is what, $450 on a house, per house? To break even for, per pupil. And while we are supportive of, you know, helping parents be able to put their kids where they want to go, but they've got, the legislature has got to stop creating unfunded mandates, whether that be capital or teacher costs and benefits and things like that when they're doing some of these things, because Dr. James, I asked him to send out an email this week, is the vouchers that's being approved for school choice is going to make our systems in Aridale County about $1.5 to $2 million shortfall. And they have to come to us typically to make up that difference. And those, again, are unfunded mandates that they're getting dealt. And so I just wanted to remind people that they'll have to make decisions, and we'll have to make decisions, working with them, on things that are done in Raleigh or Washington in a lot of cases, creating unfunded mandates. So we would love for our citizens to advocate, whether it requires a constitutional amendment, whatever it takes in North Carolina, we need impact or developer fees to help us with the growth. The Mooresville's the number one city in the country for growth. While we celebrate that on one side, on the other side, it creates a whole lot of responsibilities for our 26 county departments, our 19 fires, our three rescues, all the things we fund, and we're required to fund specifically schools statutorily. And a lot of people appreciate when we take the time to clarify what we do sitting here, working with the manager and staff, and what our role is with our citizens. Our citizens continue asking questions and are continued, in some cases, to be misled, and that's not fair. That's dishonest, to tell them to come point somewhere it's not within our control. Because I can assure you, we're a top 10 county in the state, and it's because of our management of our money. We don't go to our people for taxes and/or bonds for schools unless there's no other revenue streams available. So I just wanted to remind everyone, for the record, we don't control what we don't control, and that's not a kick in our municipalities, but we do need their help in infrastructure costs potentially, and we need their help advocating at a minimum for impact or developer fees. Because that alone, in my opinion, would slow down growth if they had to, one, do the infrastructure first before they build these developments. Some of these places, the roads can't handle the traffic, and we're going to have emergency services vehicles having to respond to those areas. And so I appreciate the investments people make in our county, but also I want people to understand what we can and cannot control. And so when we have to build schools, Bert said it many times, the way we pay for it is with taxes and fees. And when we keep having to build these schools, and they keep coming and saying we're at capacity here, 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 and here, three of us are on the ballot, and a lot of people for misinformation has put out there, we control what we don't. And I think it's only fair to tell the public, our goal is to tell the public the who, when, whys, and wheres. And my favorite saying is, "Before you judge our actions, ask us our options." And our options are, in some of these cases, we have to build these things. So people need to direct their frustration and anger at the appropriate elected officials for what they're approving, and that's why we need smart and balanced growth. Because even if they're taking care of that, we're going to have best at the next budget meeting, not only won't revenue for schools, EMS, fire, rescue, right? 26 county departments that will provide services for the citizens of the county. So thank you for allowing me to be redundant with that. However, a lot of people don't know what we do until we tell them. So I think we have to continue reminding people what we do and what we don't control. So that's what I had, thank you.
It's either we manage growth, or we're going to get to that point, we're too late. Y'all know me, I have complained about, we got to manage growth since day one. If not, we're going to raise taxes, people are going to set more and more traffic, issues are going to continue to get worse. We just approved the ceiling of $130 million for a new high school. Once that thing gets going and it gets there, and we've got debt service to have to pay. So what are we going to be looking at in two to three years now when we start paying debt service on this, with the growth that we got going? When we got people sitting on the city council that's voting for stuff, saying things that are not true, obviously they don't know what they're voting for, and they're voting yes. They need to do their homework, because it affects everybody in this county. If they go out here and approve a thousand, 1,200 homes, it affects every single person that lives in this county that pays taxes, every single person. We've got to keep our tax rate low for economic growth to get companies to come here, industry to come here, but if we, we're not going to be able to do that unless we try to manage the growth. And the growth that we've been having is not so much in the county, it's the annexations that's coming out into the county and it's affecting everybody. You know, the famous words of one municipality here in a county is, you know, if we don't grow, we die, you know, but it's just, grow smart. Just grow smart. It's just, that's the way it is, you grow smart. You know, it's not how much you can build your kingdom and take over and. You know, it's not how much you can build your kingdom and take over and everything. And I know we're going to grow, and we got to grow to be able to get business here, to get people who want to work here, and, but our problem is, we have so many people who travel out of the county that clogs up our roads, it's even more, and, you know, where are these 1,600, 1,800 people? Then you got, you know, some of the town, city saying, well, this is seven to, you know, 11 years down the road. Well, we, we want to look well beyond that, because once it's used up, once it's there, it's gone. And if we've got residential everywhere, where are we going to build if a company comes in and they want to come here? Where are they going to go? Because everything's eat up with residential. So, you know, we're, we're bedroom community of Mecklenburg County. Forsyth is not that far, so, you know, it's, it's, we get serious and manage it, we try to, you know, people are going to have to look at when they go vote in Troutman, Mooresville and Statesville, who are they voting for? What's their record? What do they stand for? So, I'm not getting into politics of it, I'm just saying, we got to manage the growth. If not, we're going to have a tax rate 65, 72, 75 cent to build all these schools and put all the, the services that we got to do. So, thank you.
All right. So, with all that said, there is opportunity, again, like we said, to convey information and be a part of our community and, and hear from people. So, I've done a couple of visits. Manager Moll and I were requested for the third year in a row to visit Ms. Campbell's classroom, she's at Statesville High School, and encouraging her, her juniors and seniors, a lot of seniors in there. And we're talking with them about what their next steps are, because we want them to feel like they can keep their roots here and go ahead and, and earn a living wage and stay in our county. And it was always eye-opening, I love talking to the classroom, the kids, I shouldn't call them kids, they're our young adults, but going in and sharing, they need to learn now who their local elected officials are, what their roles are, so they can educate themselves as homeowners, as renters, as employees, and also learning opportunities to be a county employee and the benefits of that. And so, we tag teamed on that, and it works out beautifully. The, the students were great, they posed excellent questions, so it was well worth our time to, to be in front of them, instead of just right here, a lot of times, you're not always going to get, I don't think we have too many folks that'll tune in a lot of times under the age of 20, but when we are there, we have their attention and they have ours. So, it's a great opportunity to hear back and forth with that one. And also, North Aral Rescue Squad had their banquet, and you talk about longstanding service from North Aral Rescue Squad, a lot of unique calls that they go on, everything from the agriculture, the certifications that they have, from one end of the spectrum to the other. It's a great time to see those folks who are jumping up from the dinner table, going on the calls, never know what the next thing's going to be that they're facing. But they keep going back for more, and you'll see it generation after generation from the family members, and I always think that speaks volumes when a, a child or adult child goes and follows the footsteps of their family member to be on the squad. So, glad to be there for that opportunity. And with that, I'll pass it to Commissioner Stroh.
First off, Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for coming and, and making sure we're informed, whether, don't assume that we do. You know, like today, Superintendent James, Dr. James was here, the opportunity scholarships that was passed, we're going to lose, our school system's going to lose a million and a half, 200, to, to $2 million for scholarships to private schools, who don't have to play by the same rules. They don't have to build Q lanes, they don't have to have the same, don't have to be built to the same standards, buildings don't have to be the same standards or the same issues. They can pick and choose what, who they take. It's a, a selection process, and our schools do have to take everyone. You know, Commissioner Conley said, our growth, and the gentleman spoke about our growth, you know, right now, we have the city of Charlotte that wants to open a, the red line, I guess, is, if, if, or the O-line, or the red line, or whatever it is, and, and, and put the terminal in, in Mount Ullah, Mount Moore area. You know, some people, from the surface, you go, gosh, that's great. Man, they, Donnie, you know, I can go down and jump on the train and go to Charlotte and have a good time, watch fight traffic. It sounds great for a little while, till you start thinking of the ramifications of what does that bring? It encourages more to, to live here. The end of the line will be a larger collection bubble than anywhere else. I can guarantee you, what would be the one below us, Davidson? I guarantee you, they're pushing that they go into Aral County, because they don't want to be the end of the bubble. They don't want to be the end of the line. And to be that place is not a place I, I think that Aral County wants to be, because I will tell you, we'll continue to grow, and, and right now, we, we may be a bedroom community of Charlotte, but eventually, anybody been to Atlanta, Georgia, and becoming a bedroom community of that, that place? It'll make going to Charlotte look easy. I will tell you, it's very frustrating to know that what we can and can't control, and you have elected officials who are, basically, they're passing the buck and saying, well, if you don't like it, go, go see someone else. Well, the problem is, is that's not our lane, that's not anything we can control. And I think the other is, is citizens of Aral County need to consider is, elections have consequences. And I will tell you, back to Commissioner Haupt's point of impact fees, that cannot be done by Aral County. That takes our North Carolina State Legislature. You know, you have folks moving in, building all these houses, and out the door they go. They take their profits with them. They don't have any obligation to help prepare the roads, prepare the schools, prepare the community for what comes.
County departments.
County departments, EMS, 100, 455,000 probably, the number's probably closer to 460, 470 now for one home, to support one child. That's all the money going to the schools, nothing for EMS or sheriff or, or anywhere else. So, you know, folks, this is very difficult trying times, and I will tell you, I know each commissioner up here takes us very seriously, trying to figure out and, and navigate the best way to make a difference without impinging on the, the rights of property owners. But there's got to be a give and a take somewhere, and I will tell you, I, I appreciate everyone coming and sharing their ideas. I like seeing the public comment, I wish we had more, I wish we had more people being involved. So, if you live in the city of Statesville, then reach out to your elected officials and let them know, it's not the county that has anything to do with annexation, why are you telling us to go there?
Well, I have to agree with the rest of commissioners, you know, the buck gets passed, if you don't understand it, it's called politics. And, and everybody wants to pass it on, especially election year. We, you know, it's, today, I got at least three phone calls about roads. One of them was on the off-ramps at exit 42, and they said, what are y'all going to do about those on the off-ramps? I said, that's, that's not us. And this happens every single day, that people ask us about things, and it's not us, and we don't handle it. Now, I don't mind giving information, I told them who to call, and I'll even give them the numbers. But, but we, what we do, there's five of us that, that make a decision, and, and for people don't know, we've been here since 12 o'clock today, sitting right here. You know, they think we come in here for an hour and have a meeting, we got here 12 today. So, I mean, there's days that, you know, we're here till 9 o'clock, I don't think we'll make it tonight. But, but you know, we, we do work together, we have five different minds here, five different ideas, we all don't agree, but we come together for the best of this county, and I don't think there's a one on this board that don't care about this county. We care about farmers, we care about building, we care about homes. You know, for every commercial company we have coming here, it takes people to work there. But we are trying to do our part of keeping it balanced, as Bert said, it's, it's all about balance. And, but we, you know, there's five of us, and there's 230,000 people in Aral County, something like that, 220,000, I mean, we're, there's five of us that speak for everybody. Whether you're in a municipality or not, we still speak for you. So, we do hear you, Ms. Rodriguez, I hear you, I, I know, and, and, you know, I knew about what they said last night, and that, that kind of upset me, that the way they said it, and, you know, that it's, it's us. No, we've, we've been fighting them the whole time, you know, there's some good councilmen up there, but Statesville is ready to grow, Statesville wants to be Mooresville. You know, years ago, for the people that didn't grow up here, Statesville was, you know, we're the county seat, we were much bigger than any other municipality in this, this, in Aral County. And then Mooresville started growing and growing and growing, and I dare to say, Mooresville's probably got as many people as Statesville now. Is it more? Okay. Well, I know, it, it was, it was like this, and it kept going like this, and like this, and like this, and so now they have more. Now, and, and, you know, nothing against Statesville, nothing against the people that, that run Statesville, but they've told me out of their mouth, it's their turn. They want to be like Mooresville. You know, they get all the tax money, they don't have to build schools, 50% of this budget for this county, and whether you live in a municipality or not, you're paying, but, you're paying county taxes. 50% go to schools. They don't have to pay that, they don't have to pay for any schools at all. So, you know, we do care, we, we do listen. Do we have the answers? No, we don't. But we do listen, because we do figure things, we do figure things, not next year, we figure, we try to do five, 10 years in advance, and it's, it's not an easy job. Like I said, since 12 o'clock today, I've had to sit with these guys, and it's not a bunch of pretty guys here, but, but I do want to say one thing, it, I, it's a while ago, Chair Neder gave me some cards for some people sent to us, and we appreciate that, but, but I haven't had a chance to thank the board and, and the county for, for sending flowers to my mom's funeral, I really appreciate that, it meant a lot. You know, when I walked around and saw those flowers, and, and I saw that one that said Aral County, you know, it's, because we're family. You know, we might argue, we might get in fights, we might chew each other out, but, but this is a family right here, for the next ever how many years, we're going to be here together. But I appreciate every one of you.
Thank you all for that. Now, Manager Moll, do we have any new business? County managers' report, please.
Just a quick, well, actually, two quick announcements. One is a reminder to save the date for Friday, October the 11th, for our Employee and Retiree Service Awards, it'd be at Cooperative Extension at 8:00 a.m. Another is just to remind everybody that Animal Services, they do have cats and dogs that are available for adoption. If you're interested in adopting a pet and adding to your family, please check our website. You can go there to Animal Services.
Facebook page is great.
It is, you can go to Animal Services, you can meet the animal and spend some time with it to make sure it's going to be a good fit for you and your family, but we do encourage that. We, we really do encourage people to, to please look at adopting a pet, if you're looking at adding to your family, contact Animal Services.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, may I make, ask for one clarification before you adjourn? There was a motion with the public hearing for ICATS. It wasn't clear if the motion was to adopt the resolution, and that needs to be in the record. If, if that was the motion, could that be clarified?
Can you restate how it should be stated?
A motion to adopt the resolution.
And it was it?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, motion to, and that was your motion, Scotty? Okay, so.
Was it, well, I think the motion was to approve the funding.
I'm sorry.
And the, the resolution authorizes him to apply for the grant, but, but the, there's some recording that needs to be done on that resolution, so if it can just be clear that the motion was to adopt the resolution.
Motion was to adopt the resolution, are we all good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that one, too. We don't want to block any funding for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything further? We did have a closed session for attorney-client, but nothing to report out from that one, so that takes us down to our final item on the agenda, which is a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are unanimous, and we are adjourned. And we need to sign that document.
Please don't run.